Welcome to the Portland City Councilor's Candidates Forum, hosted by Friends of Woodford's Corner and Back Cove Neighborhood Association. My name's Nancy Grant. I'm a board member of Friends of Woodford's Corner, and I'll be the moderator tonight. Friends of Woodford's Corner is an all-volunteer, five-year-old nonprofit organization that works to revitalize Woodford's Corner by promoting it as a vibrant village hub, supporting our businesses, and encouraging community involvement in our neighborhood. Back Cove Neighborhood Association, founded in 2003, represents the residents and businesses of the Back Cove area. The purpose of our forum tonight is to provide a platform for our four candidates so they can share their ideas and policies as they relate to Woodford's Corner and the Back Cove Neighborhood Association. The At Large City Councilors represents the entire city, so both organizations are very interested in learning what the candidates envision for our region and the policies that they would support. Our forum tonight is heavily slanted toward the unique issues, challenges, and opportunities pertaining to Woodford's Corner as an important hub of the city. Please note that Friends of Woodford's Corner and Back Cove Neighborhood Association are both non-political, nonpartisan organizations, and do not endorse specific candidates. Before we start, here are some housekeeping details and a preview of our forum's format. All audience members are muted. If you have questions for the candidates, please submit them through the chat. Those questions will only be seen by myself and my co-moderator Liz Hall, who you may have just noticed. In order to easily find and focus on the screens of the four candidates, I encourage you to use Zoom Speaker View. You'll see an option in the top-right corner of your Zoom window where you can toggle between Gallery and Speaker View. Click on that to get to Speaker View, and then the person who's actually talking will take up most of the real estate on the screen. Our forum will start with short introductions by our candidates. From there, we'll move to the questions part, which will include first, questions we gave to the candidates in advance, and then questions submitted by the audience. We will conclude with closing statements by each candidate. Candidates are limited by time for each question, and will be prompted when there's 15 seconds remaining, five seconds left, and when time is up. And Kirk, maybe you can show everybody who you are with your... Make a little noise so people see you. Okay?
Yeah, all right, everybody.
Yeah, and also, when your time... When the candidate's time is up, I will cut you off very aggressively if necessary. We will conclude the forum at 8:00 PM. We are now ready to start. Before you got here, each of the candidates picked their favorite number between 1 and 20, and we determined the order of answering questions from that. If you answer a question first, on the next question, you move to the end of the list. And so for the introductions part, the order is Ron Gann first, Justin Costa second, Laura Kelly third, and April Fournier fourth. During the introductions part of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves, and they were asked in advance to include in their introduction their top three policy areas. So try to keep on schedule. Ron, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ronald Gann, and I'm running for City Councilor at large. I want to thank the Woodford Group for hosting this very important forum. My ideas have been with me for some time, but everything I think about now, I think about through the lens of the pandemic. And let that sink in for a minute, because it's here, it's real, and no one really knows how it will affect any of our ideas or our vision. We are going to have to take a much more pragmatic and common sense approach until we are out of this. I believe that economics is social change. We need to expand business opportunities and create new streams of positive revenue for the city. We need progressive land use policies that will allow us to create 5,000 units of attainable housing. We need housing at every level, starting at the shelter point and up. We have to house every Portland citizen. Housing is critical for any city to thrive, and there cannot really be social change and meeting our social goals without that level of security. You cannot apply for a job when you are sleeping on the ground. Here's how I would describe the situation in town right now. We can build all the hotels we want. We have the zoning, and we have the land. But what we can't do is build the housing for the restaurant and hotel workers. And I'm not the only one asking, where will these people live? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Justin Costa will introduce himself. You're on, Justin.
Thanks, Nancy, and Liz, and David, and everyone else that's been involved in helping pull this together. It's good to be with everyone this evening. Yeah, I think I would frame this moment in time up as this is a time of crisis, and I don't think that that's news to everyone. We know that the pandemic has changed everything about the world that we live in, and in many ways, I think that change is about to get even harder. We know that we're about to hit winter. That's going to make it even more difficult for a lot of our businesses. It's going to make it more difficult for people to live normal lives. To say nothing of the absence of continued federal government support for a lot of entities, from private businesses to municipal governments and state government as well. What I would say is that the issues that Portland is facing right now are incredibly complex. They're big, and I think for the most part, they're issues that we all agree on. And, you know, I don't think we're going to hear anyone surprised that people want to talk about affordable housing. We want to talk about the pandemic, homelessness, addiction, substance abuse, mental health, education, the environment. The challenge right now, though, is that all of those issues are amazingly complex. They're all interconnected, and they force us to weigh competing values. We want a huge number of services, but we don't want to drive up costs and make Portland unaffordable for doing that. I've been on the council, I've been on the school board, and I think that experience is going to be incredibly important for actually making progress on those issues.
Thank you, Justin. Laura Kelly, you're on.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here. My name is Laura Kelly. To have my face in the screen at a reasonable distance means I can't see anybody. So I guess if you're waving or talking, I'm going to have a little bit of trouble seeing. But I am a retired pediatrician. I left work years ago to help a child of mine who was having difficulty in school. And this week, in conversation or by email with Nancy, I was just reminded about advocacy, which is the work that brings meaningful solutions to communities. And I know that you all know that advocacy work is hard work. For many years, I felt defeated in my advocacy work by a Playboy bunny. And that contributed to me drawing inward for a time. I came off the shelf and back to advocacy work the day a person walked into a school and killed five- and six-year-old children and their educators eight years ago. And the steps that I've taken since then have been incredibly rewarding and have brought me full circle to confronting the misinformation that Jenny McCarthy and others like her used to frighten parents, messages that found their way across the globe impacting vulnerable people through the power of social media to such a degree that in 2019, the World Health Organization said that vaccine hesitancy was at the top of the threats to global health. I worked on the vaccine legislation, which informed me that we need the kind of leaders who will bring experience to... and data-driven solutions. Let me finish. My three priority policies are... Policy priorities are public health, literacy and education, and sustainability of our local economy. Sorry for going over.
Thank you. April Fournier, you're on.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for having us, everybody. My name is April Fournier. I am a mom, I'm an educator, I am a fierce advocate for the things that I believe in. I'm going to keep it to three things that I'm really passionate about, and these will be my top three priorities. The first is the climate. We are in crisis. Yes, we're in a global pandemic, but we also need to have a place to be able to continue to exist as a human race. And while it's a big question, I think specifically in Portland, there's some really tangible things that we can do just on a small scale to help our overall environment. Second is housing and homelessness. As had been mentioned before, winter is coming, and so it's critical that we get the people who are living in the parks that were living on city hall's front steps or that are chronically homeless in a permanent housing solution. When we get people permanent housing, they're able to get jobs, they're able to access their treatment, they're able to pull themselves out of the cycle of poverty and be able to be sustainable on their own so they're not reliant on the system. And then finally, social justice is something that I'm very passionate about. As an indigenous person, I have fought fiercely to make sure that we have equitable resources and are also treated equitably, whether it's in the sports arena, in education, or that we're teaching our children the accurate history. But also making sure that when we're making decisions at a council, we're including everyone that it impacts. So whether that is indigenous people, people who are in poverty, people who are fighting mental health issues, or, you know, people who are seniors or people who are small business owners. So as we make these decisions, it's really critical that we have everybody at the table, and that's something I'm fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, in the next part of the forum, candidates will be given the opportunity to answer three different questions. Over the weekend, Friends of Woodford's Corner shared four questions with the candidates and explained that they would be asked to answer at least two of them. Back Cove Neighborhood Association will be asking the third question, which the candidates have not previewed. Candidates will each have two minutes to answer each question, and the order for this question is: one, Justin Costa; two, Laura Kelly; three, April Fournier; and four, Ron Gann. So here is the question. Even before the pandemic struck, Woodford's Corner struggled to keep its storefronts... Hold up. Sorry, I lost my screen. Woodford's Corner struggled to keep its storefronts occupied and businesses growing. Challenges to businesses are even greater now. What three concrete steps would you suggest the community and the city take to support small businesses and to make Woodford's Corner a thriving economic hub? Again, you each have two minutes on this, and Justin, you may begin.
Yeah, thanks, Nancy. So I'll try to blow through this, because this is a big question, and there's quite a lot of history here, as obviously you folks know. So obviously, I've been involved with all of the efforts that have been taking place in Woodford's Corner since I was elected to the council in 2014. I try to put the things that I'm thinking about into a couple of different... Three different, if you will, buckets. The first, and probably the most important, is we need to make sure that we do everything to continue to expand on all of the partnerships that are already existing. I don't have to tell you guys that those have been an incredibly important part of the development of Friends of Woodford's Corner. So I'm talking about things like the Main Downtown Center and the Main Street Program. Obviously, being able to rely on them and get support from them in an institutional way with people that do this kind of work throughout the state has been very important, and that's something that I was very happy to help with when we were going through the screening process on that. It also applies to Metro. I think most of the Friends of Woodford's Corner will know that Teresa and I had worked to make sure that we could get an additional bus stop down at the church and that Metro would be willing to keep that going, which I think is another way to help attract people to Woodford's Corner. The second sort of major thing that I think we really need to look at is we do need to look at how we can expand the pandemic-related opportunities that have been taken root in the downtown and figure out how we can make that work. Those have not been terribly popular with businesses in Woodford's Corner, but we need to look at that. And the last thing is, we just need to continue to look at potential opportunities that are coming down the pike particularly. I'll mention, because I know I've got to cut off, just some of the opportunities that might come through changes in...
I'm sorry, time is up.
Block grant programs.
Thank you. All right. Laura Kelly, you're on.
Okay. So obviously, right in front of us is the challenge of COVID-19. And I think a crucial way that the city can support local businesses is to increase access to COVID-19 testing in general, and specifically to rapid testing. Right now, when I look, I find only four locations, and depending on which place you look, only one or two where someone can get a test without an appointment. And I know that people have to get an appointment, they have to wait, and then when they get the test, they have to wait for several days. And this is crippling to businesses and to our community as a whole. And I think that one of the keys to helping us deal meaningfully with the challenge of the pandemic is to utilize more accessible rapid testing. I think that would make a big difference. Also, sort of in the same line as what Justin said, prioritizing the ways that we help businesses solve logistical problems, innovative ways to create outdoor spaces even in cold weather, proactive plans for how to deal with snow removal, parking, being good communicators and listening. I hear over and over again that people don't feel heard. So I think it's safe to say that the city can improve its responsiveness and collaboration with businesses. And then, for a more long-term view, as a person who likes to look at things which impact endpoints, is to focus on strengthening and supporting our workforce through public health and literacy and education initiatives that strengthen and support a community and lead to sustainable economy. So that's it.
Thank you very much. April Fournier, your turn.
It's me. I think this is a great question. I love coming to Woodford's Corner. I live over on Washington Ave. And so one of the things that my husband and I like to do is do date night. And being able to take a bus to go somewhere in town is a great treat. Being able to take a bus to come to Woodford's Corner is a difficulty. So I would love to look at additional ways that you can create connections between my side of town to Woodford's Corner so we don't have to drive a car. And the other thing, I think, is making that section, if you want people to come and be able to engage with the businesses, being able to make it accessible. So we already know it's difficult to go through there with the amount of cars that flow through Woodford's Corner trying to find a place to park is really, really difficult. So making this a walkable area, making this a bikeable area, making sure that if you're going to bike into this area, you have places that you can actually put your bikes. And also, if you're going to have more traffic coming through there, you want to make sure that there's places that, you know, are able to do recycling and do outdoor trash so that you also don't have the hazards of people coming through that section coming up. And then I think the other piece is, you know, you've done so much work in creating that Main Street Network community, but looking at growing those partnerships with places like Portland Bioclocal so that we can raise the profile of Woodford's Corners and the businesses there so that you have more people coming to that area to keep the businesses in business. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Ron Gann, your turn.
All right, I have a different view of Woodford's Corner. I see Woodford's Corner not so much as a destination, but as a new pocket neighborhood. If we want businesses to thrive and survive, we have to have boots on the ground, which means we have to have a lot more people living over there. We have a number of locations over there, and we have a number of interesting buildings, and we have vacant land. We can easily increase non-parking-type living, 200 to 250 units. We have the vacant Rite Aid building. There's already an interesting nonprofit looking at the first floor. Somebody like Chom can do four floors of the typical affordable housing. You have the vacant lot that is owned by Merrill. That could be more workforce-style housing. You have two large parking lots. You have the church and the funeral home. You can do things on those parking lots to increase a variety of different housing. You can do little workforce cottages over there. The Oddfellows Building is probably not a good building to add on to, but across the street, the screen printing building, you can easily do one floor and maybe two. There's also the property where the old Chinese restaurant used to be. That property can also be turned into 20, 30, 40 units. If you eliminate the need for parking, now you can put a whole bunch of people walking around in that neighborhood. We have five different markets there. Four of them are Middle Eastern. So I've been in two of them, and one of the questions I ask them is, why did they open up over there? And it turns out, there's a heck of a lot of Middle Eastern people living in Woodford's Corner didn't know anything about it. All right? But that's the solution. It's a very cool location right there, and I can see a lot of people milling around there and not going downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys are doing great on our time limits. We now are at the second question, and it is the order for this question. We'll start with Laura Kelly, then April Fournier, then Ron Gann, and then Justin Costa. This is a two-part question. Forest Avenue has always been designed with motorists in mind. While the Woodford's Corner intersection project has helped improve pedestrian safety, it still prioritizes cars over pedestrians and cyclists. So first, how do you propose shifting that paradigm so that the corner is a place where people want to walk, bike, and actually spend time? And second, and at least is important, please try to answer it. How do you propose to leverage additional funding for active transportation improvements in the corner? So again, we're going to start with Laura Kelly, and Laura, you may begin.
So my answer to this question is a model for what I mean when I talk about holistic community-centered, data-driven solutions. Woodford's Corner has opportunities and limitations that stem from intersections that are literal and figurative of community needs for transportation, business, neighborhoods with a finite footprint of geography. The big-picture answer to this question, to shift the paradigm, you need a better design. And when I talk about using health and well-being as the direction we should be headed in with all policymaking, I think a lot about the fact that good designs in our communities become powerful determinants. What increases our well-being more? A scenic bike and pedestrian path with biomass installations that act simultaneously to increase carbon trapping, decrease flood risk, and support wildlife populations, bringing people to storefronts, or carving out a space to make an incredible dog park with a water feature and cool trails? I'm not suggesting that either of those is right for Woodford's Corner. The answer should really come from the people in your community. And I think key to helping a community answer that question optimally is to invest in expert consultation. First, a needs assessment and a wants assessment. Then finding individuals with deep knowledge about urban design can really help you knock it out of the park. It appears that at the city level, we don't solve big city problems the way most of us solve problems in our own lives. We need people to be disciplined about valuing and utilizing expert resources and doing the work to understand what people want actually, not what we think we want based on our own biases. Otherwise, we continually find ourselves dissatisfied with the outcomes. In funding, I always think in terms of public, private, and philanthropic partnerships. City budgets are finite to the degree that we can work in tandem with local, state, and federal legislators and pursue opportunities for grant money. I've done some of that work, and I think that your community is perfect for those.
Thank you very much. April Fournier, your turn.
Thank you. I will try and get it all very quickly. So as I mentioned before, I think making this accessible to bikes is critical. So making sure that you have adequate bike lane coverage going through the corner is so important. I have cycled myself through there. It is terrifying. So making sure that we have really well-mart, well-provisioned bike lanes is critical, and then also a place for bike storage, I think is also critical. I would be very interested in exploring, looking at, how can we do something like a greenway? So like, South Portland has the Green Belt that connects one end of the city to the other. So how could you connect downtown to Woodford's Corner? Something that's well-lit, really well-paved, has good sidewalks, safer intersections, and kind of slows traffic down? This is a really scary intersection that you're trying to go through sometimes. And then when it comes to a funding perspective, I think when we look at budgets, you know, money goes where the city wants to allocate it to. And so what I think is, if we really want these things to happen, we can allocate funds to them. But I think more importantly, as Laura just mentioned, it's so critical for the neighborhood that is getting funds to be able to have things changed and improved or renovated or updated. The neighborhood should have a say in how those funds are used and what you want to do with them. So that, I think, I love the idea of participatory budgeting, being able to take money and go back directly to the neighborhood where the money would be used, and allowing the neighborhood to prioritize and make decisions on how they want to use those funds, how you want to use those funds, and what you think and what you think you need for your neighborhood. Thanks.
The next person to answer is going to be Ron. Thank you.
Yeah, I've spent some time over there recently. So Woodford's Corner is really an eight-cornered intersection plus a train trap. So I started to think about it from sort of like the suntan building to the screen print building, okay? And I was there at a variety of different times on different days. And I would love to be able to be here and say that I know how to fix this traffic problem, but I don't. It's an eight-cornered intersection. I couldn't get across the street. I had trouble. I kept trying different ways, but I never got the walk sign, apparently. So I think that you have to change the way we can walk across the street is number one. But I'm definitely not a traffic engineer. But what I kept thinking about was, these cars that are stopped here, where are they coming from? Where are they going to? It's just a pass-through. And so we have to sort of accept that we're going to have that level of traffic, but if we introduce a walking... But if we introduce a walking residential environment there, then we will be able to sort of see the traffic as, as white noise. It, that, that intersection of Woodford's Corner reminds me so much of neighborhoods that I lived in in Chicago and some stuff I've seen in New York. It, it could be a very, very lively and interesting neighborhood. And I don't think we should get too upset about the traffic because I think we are going to be living with it. That's my story.
Okay, thank you very much. And the last person to answer the question is Justin Costa. Go ahead, Justin.
Thanks, Nancy. So, oh, I'll try to blow through this. This is a complicated question for us. But I'll start by saying, I think, first of all, it's important to acknowledge that there's been a lot of change here in the recent past. And I think most of us that live around the neighborhood know that it has made a significant difference. You know, all of the changes to the curbs, the removal of the slip lane by the Oddfellows Building, the, we won't refer to it as the lighting, but somewhat the additional lighting and the sculpture and obviously the revamping of the Oddfellows Hall. All of that has been happening in the last few years, and that's made a difference. You know, I think for me, I would say there's been a lot of good ideas that everyone has thrown out, and each of those could be a long conversation in and of itself. The point that I think I would try to make is just that most of what has been suggested, it's not stuff that we need to do or need to think about. It's stuff that has already been done. So when we talk about connecting Woodford's Corner to the downtown, you know, seeing David Barry on the screen, we can call up John Spritz, and he can dust off the Forest Corridor, Forest Avenue Corridor study that was done in the last decade. And we can look at the findings of that. When we talk about specific challenges for pedestrians and bikes, obviously Nancy, I don't tell you that Friends of Woodford's Corner has done walkthroughs. You know that we've done that along with members of the legislature. And I think we just need to organize and figure out what the priorities are so that we can work through those things concretely, both with city funds and look at opportunities for leveraging funding from the state, from PACs, from a whole variety of other sources. And we have a huge advantage having Chris Chop be a member of Friends of Woodford's Corner. There's no one better positioned to do all of that.
Great, thank you very much. Justin, okay. We are now ready to move on to question three. That one will be asked by David Barry, who's the president of Back Cove Neighborhood Association. And this is a question that was not shared with the candidates beforehand. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. And I appreciate Woodford's Corner for organizing this and assisting us. For those of you I think that know, the Back Cove Neighborhood is made up of basically three primary things. We have small businesses. Most of them are along the Forest Avenue Corridor. We have landlords that own multifamily houses in our neighborhood, but it's primarily single-family homes. And the single-family homes in our neighborhood are on two spectrums. We have a lot of folks who are just starting off with new families, new kids, struggling to make their house payments, struggling in the pandemic. On the other end, we have a lot of elderly folks who are living on a fixed income, again, trying to pay sort of the taxes and whatever of the city for the services. We've heard a lot of talk, we hear a lot of talk in campaigns about services, and they obviously are all necessary. We have a lot of ballot initiatives that talk about restricting property owners. And in fact, I, Kate Sykes, who was spokesperson for the Southern Maine Democratic Socialists of America, who are starting these ballot initiatives, gave a quote in the paper to say, instead of putting property owners first, a lot of property owners in Portland don't feel like we're putting, being put first a lot of the time. And that we're being, as, as Justin sort of alluded to, in some degree priced out of the city, especially our folks on fixed income. So my question is, is what, what can you say to the property owners? The single-family property owners, the people on fixed income, the young families that are trying to make a living, as to what you can do to help them in this city? And I guess we start with April.
Yeah, and you have two minutes. April.
Thank you. Oh, that echo was weird. Can you hear that? Sorry. That's a great question, David. Thank you so much. I myself am a property owner. We bought our house in 2006 in East North Deering when we only had two children. And very quickly, we ended up with four children when we had twins. And so we have really, for the last decade, worked on trying to make sure that we're able to keep our home while balancing jobs while having curveballs thrown at us. The pandemic is the latest in the most recent curveball that's come our way. But, you know, I think the, going back to the referenda, you know, I think what it, to me, is a symptom of there is a disconnect between the public and what's going on with city council. And so I think the intentions behind them were certainly good. The process, you know, is certainly a challenge. But I think now that we're getting, you know, close to November, we're going to have a vote and then see what goes through and what doesn't go through. One thing that I pride myself on in all of the work that I've done, whether it's been in business, whether it's been in my own advocacy for my child with a disability or for families that are working through the disability process or trying to access public services, is it all starts with communication and making sure that all of the parties at the table are able to use the resources available to try to come to the best solution. So I don't have a specific, I'm going to do these three things because I need to see what, what's going to pass in November. And then from there, be able to work together with the council, with the other resources that we have in the city, and with the homeowners, the small business owners, the renters, to figure out how we can move forward together.
Thank you. Ron, I think you're next.
I think that the key issue here is revenue. And we don't, we don't know how to create new forms and new streams of positive revenue for the city. What we do is we continue to slice away, whether it's at homeowners or renters, however we do it, to keep trying to squeeze the same, the same source. What we need here, and we have plenty of plans, we have all kinds of plans. We have economic plans. We have all these plans. What we don't have are the mechanisms to enact these plans. And those mechanisms lie in the land use policy. And our land use policies are 50 years old. So part of the problem is, is that we can't do the things that we need to do to create new forms of revenue to take the burden off of the other people who are struggling. So just as, just as an example of, of how to do this is that we have millions of square feet of underutilized land on all of our transit corridors, whether it's Forest Ave, whether it's East Bayside, Riverside, Warren Ave. That's land that's not even being taxed. If we built just 1,000 units with just minimal subsidy, we would generate $2 million in tax revenue. And that would, that's just the beginning of how we can do it. If you think about this, we had this land over at Middle Street and Franklin that we just gave away for an affordable housing project. What we should have done is sold that land to a developer for a boatload of money and taken that money, and we could have bought 20 acres out in Riverside and gone from 50 units to 300 units. And you generate all kinds of jobs and all kinds of revenue. That's where we are falling apart. We have no economic focus in this town.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Justin, I think you're up.
Thanks, David. It's a good question. I'll try to hit the, the two high points that I heard. You know, the, the first thing I think in relation to property owners generally is, you know, you have to care as a counselor. And, you know, I think we just went through a very painful budget season, you know, and we made sure that, especially right now in the middle of a pandemic, that we were able to keep taxes from changing at all. And, you know, that's the first time in quite some time that we've been able to, to do that. So the first thing is, you have to be able to do that. The second thing is, I don't want to get too far into it, but for individuals and how they are impacted, hopefully in the coming year, we'll be able to successfully get through the revaluation, which will reset people's property values throughout the city and make our taxation more equitable in the city. The third thing I think is, you know, we are very limited by state law in terms of what we can actually do in terms of revenues. But one of the things that comes with, you know, having been through this several times is we've been able to do things that protect the city from adverse consequences at the state level. So as we've known that development was going to happen down in the waterfront in India Street area, we've designated that for tax increment financing, which is not a tax break for people. It's an accounting designation that shields that from state school funding calculations and all of those sorts of things. By doing that, we have, all things being equal, more state funding for education, revenue sharing, all of those kinds of things. All of that helps with property owners and all. I guess I'll have to come back to the referendums.
Thank you. Laura, I think you're up.
Sure. So thank you for the question. I, I think, I, I see this question as, as being a much bigger question about wealth inequality. And, and there are limits to, to, to what we can do to solve a big problem of wealth inequality at a local level. To solve that, that issue, which is at, you know, we're at a point in history when we have one of the largest disparities in wealth. In modern history, it's cyclical. It happens about every 100 years and, and usually precedes some sort of crisis point, after which we recover from it by creating jobs. We need tax reform at a federal level to solve, to solve wealth inequality. And that filters down, you know, we, we feel that locally by the things that, that you articulated. But again, we're limited as to what we can do. We can make sure that voters are educated about the kind of partners that will be, that will articulate Portland's needs at the state legislature and in, in DC. And I think, you know, the, the other thing that we can do at a city level is to make sure that we are carefully collecting the kind of data that puts information in our representatives' hands so that they can go to the table and say, you know, this is what we need and I can prove it with the numbers. Having done legislative work, I know that that is, that's the kind of thing that, that brings, that brings, that brings a powerful argument to articulating your needs. So, and, and then, and, and as, you know, as Ron said, again, the things that support, support our economy, and, and that is always going to come back to, to education and infrastructure, creating jobs.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy, you're muted.
Yes, I am. I know. I had a lot of noise going on in my kitchen, so had to mute. We're now ready to ask questions that have come from the audience. Most of these were either submitted by email over the last couple of weeks or during the forum via the chat. And we do want to thank those people who have submitted some really great questions. They've actually helped us formulate the ones that we've already picked. For each of these questions, each candidate will have one minute. I'm going to give it to Liz Hall, who has been gathering questions, and she is going to pick. And the order for the first question begins with Ron. Liz.
Great, thank you. So Martha is asking, would the candidates please share what anti-racist work they are incorporating into their campaigns so that they are better prepared to represent all people in Portland?
So Ron, you're on. One minute.
That's a one-minute question, right? I'm not doing anything overt. It's all internal. It's, it's who I am. That, that's the way you have to operate. You know, you can, if you, if, you know, I'm very focused on housing and housing issues. And then I've made no, you know, no, no question about that. And so I'm interested in things like increasing the ability to put more housing in our single-family neighborhood. Those single-family zones traditionally are racist zones. They were designed to keep black people out of white suburb. But in my campaign, I'm, I'm promoting attainable housing, housing for everyone at every level. So I'm not, I don't have a, you know, a byline about racism. It's just what I think we can do because what I want to do will create social justice. Everyone needs a house.
Thank you. Next up is Justin Costa.
Thanks for the question. I can't really distinguish the campaign from everything else, I guess. But I would just say that, you know, obviously this is a deep and pervasive issue in American society, and it's one that is really personal to me. I'm the only Hispanic on the council. When I was first elected in 2014, the National Association of Latino Elected Officials told me that I was the, the first confirmed Hispanic on their list in the state of Maine, first elected official. And, you know, that is the background of my family and my story. You know, on the council, I've done a lot of stuff related to this. Most notably, you know, I stood up and created the Community Support Fund, which provides support for people seeking asylum in the city. That's the only municipal effort like that in the entire country. We've created an entire Office of Economic Opportunity, which has now mentoring programs for people and a whole variety of other things.
Thank you. Next respondent is Laura.
Hi, so I have worked for a couple of years supporting, came to the table on, on a reparations committee as a literacy advocate and have done some, some significant work supporting some of the black leaders in our community who've been doing this work for decades. And so having seen how policy can be, can be used to, to, to have an impact on institutional racism, I would recommend that we echo some of that at a city level, like supporting the, the, the bill that included Maine African-American history in, in curriculum, looking at impact studies for policies, and again, collecting data so that we know how our policies have an impact on minority communities.
Thank you. And April, one minute.
Thank you so much. This is an awesome question. I'm so glad that it was asked. So anti-racism to me means that we're including those that are most marginalized in all of our conversations. So as an Indigenous woman, I have a certain lens that I'm looking through. But part of my campaign team is making sure that I'm engaging with communities that I might not normally engage in so that I understand the things that they're going through as part of their experience within our city. So I have made sure to include those who are immigrants on my campaign team, those who are experiencing poverty, those who have experienced racism, either within our city or just within their experience as part of Maine. On the Police Citizen Review Subcommittee, I specifically joined that committee to make sure that I understood better how those who have power in our city interact with those that don't have power in our city. I'm also on the Portland Public Schools Social Studies vertical team, looking at the Wabanaki Studies to make sure that as we're reframing this discussion about the history of the Indigenous Peoples of Maine, that we're looking at it through the lens of the Indigenous Peoples of Maine. So it's really critical to include all of the people who are experiencing marginalization in these discussions. So I do this as, as, as an educator, as a person who works in Head Start. These are all people that I engage in on a regular basis and directly influence how I do everything.
Thank you very much. Okay, Liz, we need another question. What do you, what are you pushing?
We've got another one from Gretchen and Ray ask, well, they frame it out beautifully. There is a lot of new construction going on in Portland, yet many buildings remain vacant for years. What would you do to ensure that more use is made of existing buildings, including around Woodford's Corner?
Okay, and on, on this question, we'll start with Justin, Laura, April, Ron. So go, 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 Justin.
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, that's, that's a really good question and a complicated one. I, I think it really comes down to all of the other things that we've sort of been talking about. Obviously, it depends on what the building is, whether it's residential or commercial or something like that. But the way you get it, that is, you make other areas outside of the downtown successful. And that's not an overnight project. It's something that takes time. You know, I think in general, though, Woodford's Corner has been doing that. We have been making progress over the last several years. Woodford's Corner is certainly far more vibrant than it was a few years ago. I think, I, I'm not the only one that has been pleasantly surprised, obviously pre-pandemic, about the walkability of it and how much time people are actually willing to spend on the sidewalks and outside of businesses and things like that. But it's a, it's a more complicated question than I can possibly do justice to right here.
Okay. Laura, you're, you're
Question just for a sec, just
Sure, yeah.
And my child is yelling. Just what would you do to ensure that more use is made of existing buildings, including in Woodford's Corner, as opposed to lots of new construction?
Laura.
Yep. So, you know, this would be the kind of thing that, that I would want to have more information about, you know, why the buildings aren't being used. But certainly, you know, incentivizing people to, to be mindful of using structures rather than being wasteful is, is, is really important. And, you know, how, how do you do that? You know, by assessing the needs and, and then, and then making sure that, that you're looking first at the things that already exist and then finding the ways to make those attractive to people, to make them work. You ask experts for their help. So I'd say incentives, a commitment to conservation, preservation type direction and, and that's
Okay, thank you. April, you're on.
Like, I'm unmuted, I'm ready to go.
Yes.
You know, I, I think this is another really good question. I know I've driven through the intersection and seen that vacant Rite Aid for a long time and just thought, gosh, there's so many things that we could do with that. We could do COVID testing at that place. But looking at zoning and recode so that we can change how buildings are used, you know, for residential and commercial use. But looking at, you know, how do we incentivize the people that own these buildings that don't even live here, that don't have a pulse in the community to make it affordable so that those are buildings that have people in them? Whether it's, you know, incentivize them by, hey, so we, you know, won't let the property taxes go up if you aren't increasing your rent so that they can keep tenants in there? Or why are we building all of this extra space if we already have spaces around the city, especially in Woodford's Corner that could have tenants in there? And then just looking at, you know, what, what other use could we put into these buildings instead of building more and more and more? As Laura mentioned, it's kind of wasteful to not have people in spaces that are already vacant.
Thank you. And Ron.
Well, first, this, this is not a complicated question. I, I don't, I don't buy that at all. The issue is very simple. The current city council, the current city government has no interest in fixing our land use code. And that's why these buildings are vacant. Now, you can go over on Reed Street, and there's 160,000 square feet of vacant space. That would be an awesome mixed-use, affordable, attainable project, but it's in the wrong zone. You can go down to East Bayside, right at this very minute, I can show you 30,000 square feet of vacant space and 125,000 feet of vacant land. But the Economic Development Department in this town thinks it's better to keep land vacant than to find new and creative ways to use it. It's not complicated. It's our land use code, and our current city council has no interest in fixing it. And some of us are gonna get on this council and might be stuck with this new recode. So let's just keep that in mind.
Thank you. All right, we've now come to the part of the forum where each candidate will be given one minute to share anything they want as a closing statement. And they were told in advance that this would be completely free form. The order is Laura, April, Ron, and Justin. And so Laura, you're on.
Okay. I think at the, at the heart of this group is the sign that hangs above your corner, which tells the world that you're hopeful. Hope for what is possible, faith in ourselves and each other, and the diligence to roll up our sleeves and do the work needed to strengthen our foundation is paramount. It's time that we lift our faces from the problems at our feet, focus on a future in which all individuals may thrive, and elect people to office with the skills and dedication to get us there. Compassion is essential to good governance and to community health and well-being. And all I would say is that your vote is an act of hope for a better future. Harness the power of that hope, cast your vote, and encourage the people that you care about to join you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thanks so much. April.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm really incredibly grateful to be running this race and have this opportunity just to bring awareness to the things that I'm most passionate about. If elected, I will be the first Indigenous woman to serve on the council, which I am incredibly proud of. Being Indigenous and the responsibility that's passed on to me by my ancestors absolutely influences all of the things that I look at and how I plan to govern. I'm committed to our environment. We're in crisis, we need to protect and preserve this for future generations. Housing is a human right, and so that has to be a priority for us, and we need to get creative. What we're doing is not working. Homelessness is not a crime. We need to figure out a way to get to the core root for why our residents are unhoused. Education needs to be a priority, and it needs to be equitable for every child in every neighborhood. Social justice for me means that every resident in our city, we have a responsibility for all of them. We have to work that ensure that the services that help our citizens help all of our citizens and really elevate everyone. And finally, vote, 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 please, like your life depends on it, because it does, not just in our election, but everything up and down the ballot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time. Ron, you're on.
Thanks for having me, Nancy. What I'll say is this, I think we're in a triage situation. We have quite a number of people running for different seats on the council. And I think that's a indication that people are not happy with the current council. And I don't believe that we should look to the current council for their expertise or their advice or anything like that. We need new people on the council. We need a whole new way of thinking. We need holistic thinking, we need pragmatic thinking. What we don't need is more of the same old kick the can down the road. And that's what we've got for the last 15 years, it's been kick the can down the road. Some of us are gonna be on this council. We're gonna have to work with each other. But we need to have a common focus of collaboration, not capitulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And Justin.
Thanks, Nancy, and again, for putting this all together and helping to organize it. You know, again, I, I come back to, you hear a lot of talk from all of us about the same set of issues, and I don't think that's surprising. I think everyone, literally almost everyone in the city wants to address the same set of issues. They want us to move in the same direction. The reason that we all talk about the same issues is because they are really big and they are really complicated. And this is an extraordinary time. This is probably the most difficult time that city, that the city of Portland and certainly its government has faced in generations. And if we are serious about addressing challenges like that and weighing the competing values and knowing how the pieces fit together, we really need people that know their stuff and can start working on day one. Always done that on the council and the school board, and I'm looking forward to continuing in the future.
Thank you. Wow, that was a bit of a marathon. We have come to the conclusion of our forum, and I want to really thank our four candidates, April Fournier, Ron Gann, Justin Costa, and Laura Kelly, for your great effort, and also to our audience for your participation. We will be emailing you in the next 24 hours, a link to the recording, and we hope that you will share that far and wide. A reminder that Friends of Woodford's Corner and Back Cove Neighborhood Association are both nonprofit organizations trying to make our community better in a variety of ways. Please consider getting involved with us and helping us either with time or even money. Finally, I, I echo April in saying, please, 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 make sure you vote this year. And with that, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.